Good evening. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, and I now call this school committee meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Ms. Champagne, please, roll call.
Mr. Andrew Murch.
Present.
Mr. Michael Montigny.
Excused.
Ms. Martina Shea.
Present.
Ms. Jacqueline Ryan.
Present.
Mr. Spiro Tomo.
Spiro Thomo, not Spiro.
Spiro Tomo?
Yeah, present.
Really? Uh, Mr. William Bishop. Dr. Raymond Page.
Present.
Thank you. You will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the Southbridge School Committee? I'll ask one more time, anyone here tonight who would like to address the Southbridge School Committee? Seeing no one, move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion of Minutes from November 12th, 2019. Um, I only have one correction, and that was with the adjournment. Um, as Chair, I cannot make motions to adjourn. So, um, we looked at the record, and it was Mr. William Bishop who made the motion, and which, um, and it was seconded by Mr. Murch. Any other corrections, additions? Seeing no, we'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, New Business, Agenda Item A, Receiver Superintendent Announcements. Ms. Champagne will be presenting, and I will have a statement about that after.
Good evening. The Southbridge Public Schools has several events and news to share this holiday season. However, first, I'd like to briefly discuss the incident of water damage at West Street School that several of you and the public have asked about. On Monday morning, staff at West Street School arrived to find that there was some water damage to an area of the building. Heating units above the library had failed due to cold temperature. The circulating pump from the heater ran continuously, and water flooded some rooms below, including the school library. Most of the damage is in a room that is used to store curriculum-based textbooks. The library stacks don't appear to be damaged because water flowed beneath them. In several rooms along the hallway, ceiling tiles fell to the floor. These were rooms used for special education and the storage of curriculum materials. The ESL classroom also had ceiling damage. Each of these rooms are taped off and will not be used pending further assessment and We are now waiting for input from the insurance adjuster. Heat rooms were stored at the building, and it has been a comfortable temperature for day-to-day activity. The Fire Department and the Health Department cleared the school for use after the incident. Unfortunately, there was damage to some toys that were being collected for families during the holidays. If you're interested in helping to replace these items or hearing more about that, you can reach out to West Street School directly, and they'll provide information about what the specific need is. Each of our schools has taken part in a variety of in-house, community-based holiday events. West Street School recently hosted a family event with a visit from Santa, family pictures, and refreshments. Over 255 people attended, and families had the option of posing together with Santa for a photo they could take home. Staff at the school enjoyed creating fun memories with West Street School families and nurturing a strong connection between school and home. Groups at each of the three elementary schools and South Bridge High also contributed to the Festival of Giving Trees with thoughtful and creative donations. Eastford Road contributed two large, fully stocked toy boxes to be used as raffle items. Charlton Street School's tree was especially moving as it honored a teacher at the school who had recently battled cancer. Of course, the Annual Festival of Giving Trees is an event that raises money for cancer-focused nonprofits, so this was especially significant and poignant for the school community. Looking forward this month, on December 18th, kindergartners and first graders from Eastford Road School will be visiting the South Bridge Rehabilitation and Healthcare Center to sing for residents. After their brief performance, they will move on to sing for people at the Center of Hope's Day Rehabilitation Program. The efforts in contributing to the Festival of Giving Trees and other numerous hidden generous efforts of staff and teachers now and year-round reveal that in Southbridge we really are more of a connected and strong community than many people give us credit The middle and high school band and choruses have been spreading holiday cheer as well with performances at the Thanksgiving football game, the Southbridge Holiday Visions tree-lighting ceremony, Jacob Edwards Library, and the Festival of Giving Trees. The performance of the jazz band and chorus at Jacob Edwards Library attracted a crowd of about 70 people, and they received outstanding feedback on the event, with one local leader describing it as a credit to the teachers, students, and parents who have made such a production possible, and that there was a joyful atmosphere that brought the community together. Next up is the Southbridge Middle High School Concert on Tuesday, December 17th, at 6:00 PM. We hope that everybody will come to see the hard work of our music students. There is no charge for admission, but the community is encouraged to bring in food donations for students in need. The Southbridge High School Honor Roll for the first quarter was recently published in the local newspaper. Twenty-one students earned high honors and 53 earned general honors. Additionally, 12 students at South Bridge High School were awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. This competitive scholarship, based on MCAS scores in the advanced category and their rank among peers in MCAS results. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is a four-year scholarship that can be used at Massachusetts Public Colleges. The scholarship is intended to attract top students to in-state post-secondary schools and to ease the financial burden of college for families. Southbridge High School also engaged in teaching CPR and first aid during science periods during the month of December. The goal is to eventually get every student certified, as Massachusetts considers legislation requiring CPR and first aid as a graduation requirement. Also, as you're certainly aware, Massachusetts recently voted to update the funding formula for education by way of the Student Opportunity Act. It's not yet completely clear how this funding will impact Southbridge Public Schools, but preliminary information suggests that it may only provide enough to cover growth costs. We are working to understand exactly how the legislation will impact the amount of money available to Southbridge Schools in the final analysis. The receiver is working on the next quarterly report, which will include information about MCAS scores and the results from this last spring's testing. The district is also putting together a committee of teachers and school leaders to discuss mastery-based grading in the elementary schools instead of letter-grade-based reports. Mastery-based grading uses terms to describe how well a student is mastering concepts rather than a lettered grading system. The mastery-based grading is more appropriate for elementary school students, so we're looking to move to that system. Finally, I'd like to share a word of congratulations to our fall athletes who worked really hard throughout this season, and to Alex Rodriguez, excuse me, Alex Torres, who was awarded the Big Bunny Athlete of the Week, a senior at South Bridge High School. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Champagne. Do any members of the board have any questions? Ms. Champagne? No? Thank you, Ms. Champagne. We'll now move on to Champperson's announcements. I only have, uh, one, and it is concerning the absence of the receiver. This is the third meeting in which the receiver has missed, purposely missed, coming to this board.
Speak in the mic.
Oh, yes, sorry. Has purposely missed coming to this school board. I, along with Ms. Shea at our last meeting together, made an impassioned plea for the receiver to be here. His silence answered my question, and it seems that he wishes to not keep the community informed personally. And by cutting off access to himself, he hurts himself and only himself. There are members of this board who want to work with him. Heck, I campaigned on working with the receivership and trying to better the lives of the community and the students. And it's becoming very difficult to sit up here and defend him when he refuses to have the courage to sit here and be asked tough questions. It's uncomfortable, yes, but it's hard to defend somebody who's not even willing to put in the effort to be here. And that's all I have to say to that. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Members' Forum. We'll start over here tonight. Mr. Murch?
Thank you. Um, I attended the 100th Bartlett versus Southbridge game. Um, it was a good game. It was windy. It was an offensive fight, and the game was a lot closer than the score may reflect. So, kudos to the football team for dealing with the bitter wind and cold that we had to put on a heck of a show. The crowd was very enthusiastic, and a lot of people turned out for it, and it was my son's first football game because I took him with me, and he had a blast, and I may end up having to buy football cleats probably next year, so, uh, thanks for that. It's greatly appreciated. I want to address some concerns that have been brought to my attention, um, but a little bit of a comparison with it as well. I campaigned personally on the district increasing communication with the community, and from my perspective as a parent, so far, at the elementary level at least, I've noticed a vast improvement over the last two years on what's on communication from administrative staff and teachers. Communicating about my son's education and what his needs are have been phenomenal, phenomenal change in the last two years. So, from my perspective, I am a lot less stressed about my son's education because I know if there's an issue, I'm getting a phone call or an email. Or if I call the school and ask a question, I get an answer. And I, I can't commend the administration at the, at West Street, and I've talked with parents at Charlton Street who have very similar experiences, so it's great to see that the change in communication has been made, at least at the elementary level. However, I did have a parent message me, um, on my Facebook page regarding an issue with the lack of communication at the middle school. It is an anecdotal situation, but it still lends to the fact that there is still improvement that needs to be made, but the district, at least from my perspective in communicating with parents, have made strides in improving that communication, but there's still work to be done. From my position on working with the receiver, I have had positive experiences when I have met with him. Um, I'm also on, on the Receiver's Advisory Board that he has created as well, which is made up of different community leaders and, um, and parents as well, and we also have a student that sits on the board, so we get a lot of different community perspectives, and he's been very open and transparent. In the meeting that we've had, he was, he laid everything that he presented to us was very simple. It was very informative the first time around, and it was constructive discussion regarding that. My personal opinion on why the receiver hasn't showed up, and I wanted to address this prior to your statement, so I want that to be heard, is I don't believe, and I made mention of this the last meeting, uh, or previous meeting, that we needed to change how we work together and how we can work as a body to help improve the school system. That was followed up with criticism, repeated criticism of the same points again and again, accusing the receiver of not doing his job according to the law, which was, which was presented at a previous meeting by a member. That kind of, those kind, that kind of rhetoric coming from this body, and I understand that we all have opinions that, of our, of the receiver that may not be positive, but it coming from this body in a public forum in the manner that it was coming from, I wouldn't want to work with, with that. Personally speaking, if I didn't have to, I wouldn't. The receiver has made this point perfectly clear, he doesn't have to work with us. He has to work with the people in the central office. He has to work with the people on the town, our town councilors, and he has to work with teachers and other site administrative staff. That's it. He owes his duty to the kids and the teachers and the staff of this district, and communicating with the town council, and leaving an open line of communication at each site and in the central office. I don't blame him one bit at all, and to me, I ran on trying to help unite the school committee and trying to get everybody to work together. Given the circumstances, nobody likes, but we got to deal with it, and this is another step that we need to take to help bring him back to the table, to prove that we can even have a constructive discussion at the table. Because from what members have spoken, it's been mostly negative and mostly pointed in one direction. If you come to a situation where you are on camera, facing the public, and you're being ridiculed and criticized to a point where you can't rebut, and accusations made of, if you don't have to deal with that, anybody would leave that situation because nobody likes being not called out. Called out is a different situation. There's personal accountability. But being accused of not having the kids' best interests at heart for a guy who has spent over 20 years working with children, being an educator and an administrator, there's, there's no, to me personally, just from what I've experienced, there's no evidence to, to even try to go that route, as opposed to trying to regain power within the school committee and have it back under our control. We are hindering progress. We're trying to prove that we can work with, with central office administration to get that power back. In the letter that it was stated when we were put back under receivership for the next three years, it was explicitly mentioned that the Southbridge School Committee, in large detail, did not have power over this, or that, or that, or this, or this, or that. It was a long list. That was a point to be made. We need to improve on our message. If you have a problem with the receiver, at least from my perspective as a parent, you got a problem with the guy, call his office and go meet with him. When we're here in this, we need to try to push the positivity. Sarah came up here and talked about how our high school students are taking CPR. That's going to save lives in the future. That is a very positive thing that's happening in this district. And if there have been positive messages that Sarah has said, that the receiver has said, that have been marred and hidden by negative content at the end of this forum, because the people remember the end of the movie, they don't remember what happened in the middle sometimes, especially the minor details. But when somebody makes a stringent point to call out the receiver and accuse him of different things, it doesn't bode well for us having a cohesive relationship. We need to work on that. We got to buckle down and put our negative opinions aside, out of the public eye, criticize him in a, in central office. But when we're here, we need to push the positive things that are going. People are losing faith in this school system, and part of it is because of us, and it's because of how this body has behaved under receivership. It has from day one been a fight against it, and it has led us absolutely nowhere, but put us in a worse situation because people have left. I, as a parent, I'm sick of seeing a revolving door, and I'm sick and tired of hearing the negative. I'm, I'm tired of it. I can see it. I'm well aware. It's not hidden. We need to change where we're coming from to prove to the community and to the state that we can get our act together and work together and work through our differences and talk about the things that need to be spoken about. I'm, I'm just, I'm so, this is my first time in politics, this is my first time in a local office, and it's so severely frustrating to see what is realistically a lack of teamwork to try to do something. It, it's aggravating, and, and I, I hope that the new year can bring a new way of approaching things, and we can get through the rest of the school year and try to develop a cohesive relationship. Because if we don't try to change our message, he's not going to come, and it's just going to be a bitter fight till this district, till more and more students choice out because they don't want to deal with it and they hate seeing it. This, we've, we've lost 500 kids. We've lost 500 kids to choicing out because, A, parents have a right to make sure their child has a great education, and I respect that, and I commend any parent that puts their, their child's interests before their personal interests, because a lot of parents want their kids to grow up in Southbridge Public Schools, but if we're not cutting it, they have a right to leave. But parents dealing, a lot, some parents that I've spoken with are just sick and tired of dealing with, hearing about the negative because that's all they hear, and they think the school system is failing, so they just decided to abandon shit before it went under. That's not the message that we need to come off of, since we're the first point in the public eye for the school systems. We need to change the way we discuss the public schools in this forum if we are going to have any chance of trying to develop a cohesive relationship with the receiver so we can prove to potential employees, a potential superintendent, that the school committee is not so hateful to central office administration. And it seems that way. My wife is not a politically apt person, but she seems, she sees that, from her perspective at least, because she's the, I banter to her about this all the time, and I force her to watch the whole school committee meeting. Even she says, why is everybody so negative? They, it, there's no need for it. It doesn't breed progress, and that's what we're here to do, is make progress. I, I've, I've been polite. I've just been, you know, trying to be positive, but I'm, I'm sick and tired of it. We're adults. We were elected to this position to do the best job that we could to help ensure the progress of the Southbridge School Committee, even though we're in receivership. It's time that we, as a body, start actually working together to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murch, and I'm going to briefly respond to that. I was very much like you when I first got on this board. I very much shared a lot of the same perspectives. However, all of us represent viewpoints in this community, valued viewpoints, important ones that need to be addressed. The receiver not being here and his absence allows those viewpoints to go unanswered and that negativity to go unanswered. He is the head, and as the head, he has a responsibility to this community to hear all of its perspectives. It's not easy. It's never going to be easy. And there's a lot of positivity to talk about, but there's a lot of hard issues to address too. And unfortunately, with his seat empty, it's hard to have that meaningful discussion the public needs to see, to actually show that we're tackling these tough, tough issues in a substantive way, that we're all understanding where we're going. Because a huge portion of the public does not understand where the Southbridge School System is going, because all they do here is the negative, and it's important that this body have that constructive discussion. So, I understand your frustration. I get it, but he needs to be here. He gets, it's his job to make sure everybody involved is understanding what's going on. And it's one thing to miss a meeting or two. This is the third one. He's not making an attempt. I have gone there multiple times pleading with him to be here. I'm far from trying to drag his reputation through the mud. I have no interest in doing that. I only want what's best for the kids. I think all of us do at the end of the day, and I really hope that he starts making his presence known again. Ms. Shea?
As the Receiver's Report said, there was water damage at West Street in the library. There were toys that were lost due to the water. The, they, it's been one of those Christmases that everyone's asked for more toys, more toys, more toys. These were special toys that were selected for different children. Uh, if you can call West Street, they'll help you get the, um, be able to help replace some of those toys. I was going to call today, and I was remiss in doing that. I will do it first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Mr. Thoma?
Thank you. Last meeting, I had a question regarding what determines chronic absenteeism, and I think you were going to try to find out what that means.
Yes, um, it was, we discussed that me and Martina did at our meeting with him. It was between 10 and 20 absences. I believe it's closer to the 10 number, about two weeks.
Unexcused absences?
Unexcused, not medically excused absences.
So, if...
If a student misses two weeks of school unintentionally, if I remember correctly, Ms. Champagne, do you have an answer to that?
In the data for schools, chronically absent is equated to 10% of school days. So, by the end of the school year, it's 18 days out of 180 days, but it's calculated as you go along. So, for example, if there's only been 30 school days, three days is chronically absent. So, it's 10%, depending on how many days have already occurred.
Now, were you able to find out if that percent was accurate? That was reported in the Uwista Telegram, that 31, 32%?
I couldn't find the article. I didn't see specifically what that article said. I'd need to know more about what, what the article said to...
It quoted like something to the effect of 31, 32% of our students is chronically absent. This was last school year. So, if we have 2,000 students approximately, you're looking at 600 students that are chronically absent.
I don't, I don't know that that's accurate.
If that's the case. And my question is, that's a lot of students, because if they're not in school, they're not learning how to read. And this would be a good point to have them here, is I was wondering what they would be doing maybe to improve that. I don't know if you know, or...
If, if I may, actually, to kind of lead on to your question, in unexcused absences, are suspensions and long-term suspensions count as excused? Or would they be contributing to the chronically absent?
I'm not sure. I could find out. I would say...
Because if that's a contributing factor, and we have disciplinary action being factored into that, that would be, that would be an outstretched number. To say 30% of our kids are being, are chronically absent, but if we have kids that are suspended for five days and unexcused for five days, they meet that chronically absent requirement.
Yeah, I'm not sure how suspensions play into that number, but I could certainly find out specifically what that data point means.
Because it can be skewed, and I just don't want, if it, if it says 32, the article says 32%, and that's factored into that chronic absence, that's just a, a very askew number that shouldn't have been really reported.
Right, right. Well, this is what, why it caught my attention.
Yeah.
And 600 kids is a lot to be chronically absent. They're not learning how to read, but I wish the superintendent was here to see if, is anything being done? I mean, it's like, I'm asking you now again to find out, so, or if you could find out, are they addressing it? I, I don't know.
I know when I, I bring up attendance every time, and I ask a receiver every single meeting, what's our attendance at across the district? And what's our attendance at South Bridge Academy? And then how are things, where are our disciplinary actions at? I want to see it because I've, when I was in Head Start, I've, on attendance, need to have at least 90% of the kids there. And I'm seeing not, like, we, we were, I was seeing, we were discussing numbers around like 88% if you, if you factor out the South Bridge Academy, it was like, we were at 88% attendance, which would be nowhere near that 30% number. And, and when we discussed attendance at the Receiver's Board, um, we weren't even close. I mean, we had, we had, we started having kids miss, missing days, and the attendance started to drop, but the weather, the temperature started to drop, and kid, you know, kids get sick when it gets cold, so I kind of started, it was trending with what you would normally see, but I, when you spoke about that last month, I was like, it had to be ridiculous because the data doesn't show that, and these teachers take attendance of their classes every day.
Yeah.
So...
Again, I don't know what the articles, I don't know what the article specifically said. That sounds off to me, but I can find out more specifically whether or not some suspensions and disciplinary-type absences play into that number, or whether they're not a part of that number. I could clarify. Any other questions?
That'll be it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Champagne. Mr. Page?
Uh, the only comment that I have about this is the primary purpose of these meetings once a month was to keep the school committee engaged and informed, and particularly the town engaged and informed, um, under receivership as to the activities and progress and things that were going on in the district. Given the fact that that doesn't seem to be the case, my recommendation would be to the receiver, if his intention is to not show up to these meetings, that we simply cancel them. And the other point that I would make for that is that if one month, once a month, is too frequent in order to, to provide the community with substantial progress on the, on things that have been made in the district, we can just have meetings once a year, once every three months. months, or once every whatever. When I, I'll be honest with the community, when I make this statement, when I see these agendas come out and I see one item of new business, which is receiver superintendent announcements, and there's very little of substance that ever goes into those announcements other than, you know, sort of casual communication that can easily be done on the web, or a podcast, or some kind of other kind of format of general information without any substantive discussion or involvement in this board or the people that are on this board, there's no need for us to come down here for a meeting. That's the opinion that I have on the matter, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Ms. Shea, you had another comment?
Yes, getting back to the issue of attendance. Attendance has always been a huge problem in Southbridge. This is not a new issue. Mr. Thomo should be quite aware of that. We had huge problems at the high school. I can remember one day when I was at the, I was teaching at the high school and I had a meeting at Charlton Street, and I picked up their daily attendance sheet, and it was the same names. They tend to be families with family issues, and these are going to be ongoing problems. I don't, you know, we have tried all kinds of things, truant officers and, you know, we had times when the vice principal at the junior high school sat at the door and checked everybody in. I don't know what we can do that we haven't already tried except to keep working at it. It is a real issue.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Any other members wish to make any more comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The meeting is adjourned.